November 25th zoning board of appeals meeting. Before we start our petitions, I want to do a in-house paying of the bills. We have a $350 bill for Worcester Telegram and Gazette, a $120 bill for Worcester Telegram and Gazette for July 29th, and a $16.75 WB Mason for office surprise.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Shawn Morrison, 615 Mason Road, Ashby, Mass. Special permit and variance, Section 6, Table 1, to allow the use of property of 516 Boston Turnpike as an adult novelty retail business.
So we have a request to continue for this hearing to the next scheduled meeting for December 30th, 2019.
Is there a limit on the number of times they can continue?
So there's no limit. Their request to continue today, they would be a person short on the board again. So the one thing that we'll have to be wary of is the deadline decision, which we'll be reaching out to push that when needed.
Okay. Yeah, move to continue?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have to say anything on this, Chris? Okay, our next continued hearing is 864 Hartford Turnpike. New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, 550 Catuah Road, Framingham, Mass. Variance, Section 7, dot B, five to allow construction of a tower to be less than 20 feet from the main building. Special permit, Section 6, Table 1, to allow construction of a wireless communications tower.
Good evening. Michael Dolan from the law firm of Brown Rudnick here on behalf of the applicant, AT&amp;T. My client has licenses to operate a wireless network throughout the country, including here in the Commonwealth. AT&amp;T is proposing a small cell antenna facility on a new utility pole to be installed on the private property at 864 Hartford Turnpike. AT&amp;T's radio frequency engineers targeted the proposed location due to high data demands on its network in that location and capacity issues. AT&amp;T's existing macro antenna facilities, which are the very large eight, nine-foot antennas that are, you'll see on top of towers and water tanks and things like that, are not adequately servicing this area. And these small cell antennas are, as I'll explain in a bit, are very small and can provide a real targeted benefit to customers of AT&amp;T in a specific area that they're not enjoying the type of coverage and capacity they'd like. What we're proposing here is a 29-foot wooden utility pole. On top of that would be an unobtrusive 25-inch-long-by-10-inch-diameter antenna at the top of that pole, and then a small equipment cabinet mounted to the pole. At the 11-foot, 6-inch height would be the bottom of that small equipment cabinet. There are also some fiber optic cables, an electric meter with a shut-off switch, and some conduit. The subject property is in the commercial business zoning district. This facility would have, as I alluded to, as far as the size of it, would have a negligible visual impact on the surrounding area. From a land use planning perspective, it's a great location. The location for this pole is tucked in the back of the property, looks like any other utility pole you'd see around, but what, as I say, would add this very nice benefit for the AT&amp;T customers in the area. In short, this facility would allow AT&amp;T to be able to handle more data at faster speeds and with better and more reliable coverage. As alluded to, we're seeking a special permit under the zoning bylaw, as well as a dimensional variance for the rear setback. Setback requirement's 25 feet, and we're proposing 10 feet. Similarly, there's a provision under the bylaw relative to the proximity of structures on a lot, and there's some question whether perhaps that would apply to this facility. However, out of an abundance of caution, we did apply for a dimensional variance from that as well. The requirement under the bylaws that structures be 20 feet away from each other, and in this case, this structure would be about four feet away from a storage container on the property. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions from the board?
Is it impossible to build it in a way that would comply with the setbacks?
Well, yes. I mean, the location, from an RF standpoint, the way the engineers have designed this, they've given us a very small area in which we can place this. And given what's going on at the property, there's a lot of activity on the property, and there's multiple structures for, there's buildings, as mentioned, storage containers and things like that. This was the one that would provide the best location and is in proximity to a Shrewsbury Electric Light and Company pole, and we're going to go with underground utilities from there, so there's some logistical things we need to do there. So all in all, this was the location that my client, in concert with the utility, thought would be the best location.
Okay.
Anyone else? I'd just like to make a comment that on the property, we're intending to put the cell tower. Some building code violations with the building that's located on the property, and I would like to see those addressed before any permits are given.
Absolutely. It was my understanding they had been. If they have not been, then we would surely agree to a condition that any approval be that all those violations be corrected before we could put a shovel in the ground.
Is that okay, Chris?
Yeah, so if the board were to move in that direction, I would suggest the condition that cites the notice of violation letter. I guess Patty would, should we have, request a potential continuance to reach out and get any other specifics from the police and fire department in regards to anything beyond that, or?
Well, the main concern here is that recently, there's been a new use on the property, and the site plan that we have now is dated July 2019, and it doesn't address the new use on the property. So we're not exactly clear about other items or structures or storage on the property to have clear access to the cell pole or cell tower once it's erected.
I'm sorry, are they proposing a new building, too?
No, but there's a new use on the property since your, since the drawings were submitted.
Since our drawings, okay. Okay, I'll explore that further.
Right, so.
So I guess the two options would be to continue the hearing if it's amenable, and we could explore that in a little more detail, and then come back with a kind of finalized plan, or we could move forward with the condition that, as noticed in the notice of violations, that those be addressed and render a decision tonight.
Chris, now he's saying he was notified that it was remedied. Have you gotten any notification?
So my understanding is that it has not been remedied yet, but.
So I think maybe we should clear that up before we move forward with issuing the special permit.
I tend to agree with that also.
So if the applicant is amenable to continuing, we can definitely touch base on that.
Sure, we'll reach out to the owner. We had been told that it was, and maybe there is some ambiguity there. I'll get that cleared up, and I'll find out, we can note that use and look into how that might affect anything with regard to our site plan.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, my y'all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to continue that to the December 30th?
December 30th.
And that's 619.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, next 619 hearing, we hear the appeal of Thomas Peters, 59 Francis Ave., Shrewsbury, Mass., with a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 6, Table 1, to convert an existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling upon an existing non-conforming law upon property located at 25 Wesleyan Street in the Residence B2 District. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate, 22 plot 216 000.
17, Will it, we'll go back to that.
Mr. Chairman, this is the Will it, this is Will it Drive?
We're going to go back to that, so we opened the 25 Wesleyan.
Oh, okay.
But we'll go back to the other continued hearing.
Yeah, for that one, too.
I wonder if we should shut the doors for the?
Can't.
Can't.
Right, okay.
If it pleased the board, for the record, as you know, my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney with offices at 11 Maple Avenue. Unfortunately, Tom Peters, the applicant, could not attend tonight. He's out of town, and he apologizes for that. He asked me to stand in. This is a request to, as you may be aware, if you've looked at this particular property, it and the property next door are, or have been in a substantial condition of disrepair. And this particular property, Mr. Peters purchased a short while ago and undertook to get into renovations and so forth. In the process of that, he determined and feels that it would be better utilized as a two-family rather than a single. I think that the actual interior plans show that it would actually be a reduction of a bedroom in this particular case. So basically, what he's looking to do is convert the existing single-family into a two-family without any exterior changes, except perhaps a door, maybe. And I know he's reviewed this with the building department, but I would suggest to you respectfully that, number one, this is, what he plans to do is going to be a substantial improvement to the property and to the neighborhood. Number two, this would be in keeping with the bylaw that allows this with a special permit, and I would suggest to you that there would be no nuisance factors whatsoever associated with this particular change. If anything, what he's done here is moved to abate a nuisance that presently exists there. So we can only hope that something like this happens to the place next door as well. But that being said, I would suggest to you respectfully that it is good use for the property. It's in keeping with the bylaw because of the special permits, it's allowed, and it is actually a great improvement to the premises.
Any questions?
Joan?
I just wanted to confirm, there's no change to the footprint?
No.
The exterior is not going to change substantially, except for egress?
My understanding is no change to the footprint, and I think.
That's right, only one egress landing, which is allowed and required for building code.
Okay, thank you.
That was sort of my question. I see that there's stairs from the second floor to the first floor. I imagine that's all within the building envelope.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, no questions.
Anyone in the audience like to be heard on this petition? State your name and record, please.
Louis Ross. I live at 18 Haskell Street. I was just, actually, we were, my husband Barry Pollster, we were just wondering what this might look like. My neighborhood, especially along Wesleyan, in recent years has seen quite a number of some of our older historic homes ripped down and very large duplexes built in. They really don't do much to add to the way the neighborhood looks. They're just so oversized.
Well, as he stated, there's not going to be any change to the exterior of the building, staying the same.
Yeah, by what we got in the, you know, in the letter that invited us to come along, we had no information at all. So basically, that's what we're hoping to find out, is how much is going to be ripped down, and how much was going to be added onto the back, what parking was going to be like.
Everything is staying the same, except the interior.
Okay.
But the exterior is staying the same.
Okay, that's useful.
How low parking, Richard?
Same. It's got a parking area with a garage setback. I believe there's plenty of room to have plenty of parking there. It's a fairly good-sized driveway, and it's deep as well.
Enough room for parking on Albee Off Street?
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Most of it, yes, yes, that's very helpful. I guess just one other question, maybe beyond what the appeals board might be able to address, but we've seen, again, you know, I wasn't exactly sure what residential B1 stood for. I always thought it was a single-family home. And in recent years, with at least three of our older homes being torn down, and two duplexes, meaning four places to be, and one colonial down on the corner that now has two single families on it, there had been some existing multifamily, which is fine. I recognize all neighborhoods go through change. I'm not complaining. But at one point, does, when we've already seen about 30% of the neighborhood get variances, at one point, does that become too much, and the zoning becomes irrelevant?
Each case is separate.
And the nice thing is, this isn't a variance. It's in keeping.
If I can kind of, on a broader level, address that, so the residential B1 district allows by special permit this, what we see before us now, which is essentially a single-family converting into a two-family with no exterior modification. What that does, that allows houses to increase in density without impacting the neighborhoods. It'll still largely look like a single-family house. So it allows that kind of additional investment in the property, additional potential for the property without having larger impacts on the larger neighborhood. There are avenues, depending upon, as you alluded to, depending upon sizes of lots, that could allow larger duplexes in this zone. We are, the planning department has been responsive to the, some of the larger developments that have gone on in the past, and we've been working on some zoning amendments in the past few years to address that. And we're going to continue to review that as we kind of.
That would be wonderful.
Try to tighten that up, so.
I mean, there is such a shortage of small homes where younger couples, you know, starting, trying to start their family, trying to build equity, I mean, they're just not available anymore.
Yeah.
And every, yeah, it's beating a drum that's well beaten, so I don't need to re, I'd like to see it preserved.
And I would invite you to, if you wanted to discuss this more offline, I'd definitely invite you to do that.
I'd be delighted.
And while we're here, I'll make a quick shameless plug for our December 11 Town Center presentation that's looking at rezoning in the center of town. It'll be a presentation, as well as allowing public comment on specifically the town center, but a lot of these issues of density and housing and commercial businesses in that town center, December 11.
Wonderful plug. That's not, that's not shameless at all. That's what we want to know. That's great, thank you.
And that's going to be held where?
That'll be held at the library.
On December 11th during the?
December 11th, correctly.
Do you know what time it is?
At 6:30.
6:30.
Yeah.
Oh, 6:30. I don't need to take a vacation day, how nice. Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else have questions in regards to this petition?
John Scott, I'm in on Wesleyan Street. We've watched this property and the properties that left in the city during the past 10 or 11 years. Anything we could do to improve it? We don't have any objections to it, and several of my neighbors that aren't here expressed the same thing to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, seeing no other questions, notify your decision.
Thank you.
So it's the 17, Will it, continue? Yeah, continue. Yeah, wait, 28, yes. Oh, for Will it? Okay, that makes that easy.
And with that, I'm leaving the time period within which we make a decision.
Do I have to read that into the?
We should, we should read it and then express if there's the continuance.
It's because we expected to have elevations for the board to take a look at, and they haven't been completed yet.
Okay. Yeah, continue.
17, Will it Drive? I leave you.
Conicuti?
Conicuti. Variance, Section 7, Table 2, and a special permit, Section 4, dot B, to construct, in addition, 20 feet from the front property boundary, and 24 and 7/10 feet from the side property boundary on an existing non-conforming structure. We have a letter here for a continuance on this hearing, and it will be continued until December 30th.
Move to continue?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Our next hearing, 246 Boston Turnpike. Brenda Mannion, 23 Fronkroft Road, Shrewsbury, Mass. Variance, Section 6, Table 1, to operate a fitness studio.
Mr. Chairman, and members, respectfully, Richard Ricker again. For the record, I filed this petition on behalf of Ms. Mannion. I'm surprised not to see her here tonight, and as much as this is a request for a used variance, I'm sure you'd like to hear about what her program would involve. Unfortunately, I don't see her, so I would respectfully therefore ask for a continuance on this one as well. I'm not sure if it was a mix-up in communication or what, but I assume she got notice of this.
You sure she's not just withdrawing?
Yeah, I'm sure of that. She needs a place to go and had a hard time finding a place, and that's part of the reasoning for going forward.
Okay.
Pleasure to be with you.
Need a motion, or move to continue at the next meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It continued December 30th.
Thank you.
Okay, next hearing, 25 Crescent Street, Residence B1, Spencer Rooney and Mary Scheider. Special permit, Section 4, dot B, to demolish and reconstruct an existing non-conforming structure due to the condition of the existing foundations.
Spencer Rooney, 25 Crescent Street.
Michael Rooney, 36 Crescent Street.
So here today, requesting a special permit to remove and replace a non-conforming structure. As a quick recap, we were at the September meeting, where you granted us a variance and special permit to add an in-law apartment above a detached, existing, non-conforming garage. And again, thank you for that approval. Upon further inspection of the foundation, it was found to be insufficient for the proposed project, so we're here requesting a new special permit to remove and replace that foundation. Other than that, the project remains unchanged, same footprint and same proposed work.
Did you submit plans with this the last time?
Last time, yeah, and we resubmitted the same plan this time.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions?
I have a question. So I guess I have, it looks to me like it's an opportunity for you to be less non-conforming, and so I'm wondering whether you've considered moving the garage entirely?
We've considered it. I think we're using basically the same spot to build a new one, but if we were to move it, we could probably move it to like six feet from the side yard setback, but then could we also make it bigger?
Well, we'd have to see it, I guess.
I guess, so we could resubmit with a bigger plan, but for, but more, but less non-conforming? Well, so if we wanted to explore that option, we could look for a continuance, have new plans submitted, and then the board could.
Decide which way to go.
Could review under those circumstances with the new plan submitted.
I'll just say, I think, you know, my sort of reservation last time, which was overcome, was that the hardship was going to be that if you were to build it anywhere else, you'd, it would be very expensive, because you would be sort of building a new structure where there wasn't one. Now, if it turns out that you can't use this structure, and it's the foundation in particular that's the problem.
Yeah.
So you'd basically have to start from scratch, right? So at that point, there's not really any reason why it would have to be.
In that spot.
Detached at all, or in that spot at all, right? In which case, do you see what I'm saying?
Well, the reason that we got the variance detached was because of the hardship for the easement, not because of we were using the structure.
Okay, I was thinking of it in terms of both when I was voting, but the point is sort of the same, that if you, if, because the foundation's insufficient, you really have to start from scratch.
Yep.
Then there's not any particular reason it has to still be in that spot, right? Or be detached.
Well, the hardship that we applied for was due to blocking out our neighbor and the easement.
Okay, and would the easement, the easement appears to be far on the, what is this, the south side?
South side, correct.
So you're saying you wouldn't be able to put it on the back of the house?
And the garage is where our neighbor gains all their light and air.
Gains all their light and air.
Hardship.
Okay, well, I just wanted to sort of clarify that, because I think if, to the extent that you can't use any of the existing structure, if there's a way you could make it otherwise comply, you wouldn't even have to come back to us, I think.
Right, that was my point.
If you can build it in the building envelope, in other words, and within the correct size, you don't need a variance, you don't need a special, well, you still need a special permit, yeah, but you wouldn't need a variance at that point, so you wouldn't even have to come to a vote with us if you can find a way to make it comply.
Yeah, we have a variance already, correct.
You have a variance to build it in that same location, like using that existing structure? I don't know that that, does that still apply?
Is the existing structure part of the variance?
They have a variance because our zoning bylaw says that the, that the structures are attached, and these are detached, so the variance was granted to have them detached.
Detached, okay. But if it was a new plan, would it need, would they need a new variance?
So we were interpreting that the variance exists and it would remain in place, the special permit for the in-law would remain in place.
Okay.
What would not remain in place is the special permit to just add the second floor. Now, it's a new special permit to address the structure.
Interesting.
Because of the addition of the second floor?
Probably easier to do what they're doing right now.
The special permit was to add this, because they got two special permits and one variance last time, so now one of the special permits is not valid because the scope has changed because of the foundation. So now, they would have to modify the entire structure by removing it and replacing it, so that is a new special permit.
Okay.
After finding out that the foundation was no good, did you look into maybe connecting it to the house?
It's the same thing as we looked at it before. We looked at it initially at our last meeting, but again, it would block out our entire neighbors, and then based on how the size.
Where are they located on this plot plan, to the rear of the property?
The north side. So closing in that gap in between the garage and the house is what we view.
It'd be considerable change to the character, so we'd be basically expanding this house that was built in 90 years ago into this bigger.
Longer, right.
Yeah, basically, what we're requesting here wouldn't change the outcome at all from the previous rule.
Right.
Okay.
I'm sold. It's easier to do this.
Anyone in the audience want to be heard on this? Seeing none, we'll take it under advisement and notify your decision.
Thank you.
Okay, our next hearing is to hear the appeal of Jeremy Welch and Chimson, 59 Julio Drive, Shrewsbury, Mass., for a variance and special permit to allow construction of the use of property as a three-family under the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7, Table 2, Section 4, dash B, and Section 9, upon property located at 59 Julio Drive in the Residence B1 District. The subject premise is described in the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate, 22 plot, $45,000. State your name and record, please.
Good evening, members of the board. Attorney Justin Raffelson, on behalf of the applicants.
Jeremy Welch, the owner of the property, my wife, Chimson.
Evening, members of the board. Attorney Justin Raffelson, on behalf of the applicants.
Jeremy Welch, the owner of the property, my wife, Chimson.
So if you can kind of explain what the, what the proposal is?
First and foremost, I do want to make a point of clarification, because I'm relatively new to this and getting involved within the last few days, and it seems to me that on the agenda, it is posed as a application for special permanent variance. My understanding, through speaking to my clients, is this is more or less a clarification of existing, of pre-existing nonconforming use status, and I'm not sure what the board's position is on that and how you want to go forward.
So the application was noticed as it was submitted to the town clerk, so we included a variance from section eight, table two, which is the dimensional regulations, and then a special permit from section four B, which is continuation of uses. It's a larger section, so those were the sections that were cited in the application, and we noticed it under that, that manner as it was submitted to us.
Okay, so I'm here today to argue on behalf of my client's assertion that this is a pre-existing nonconforming use, and I'm just making sure that that's something I can do right now, given what you just represented.
I mean, it's, you can make the argument for it. My recommendation would be to request a withdrawal without prejudice, and then perhaps we can meet and discuss further options regarding this, this application. But if you'd like to move ahead with the, the application as it's submitted, that's also your, your right, you're entitled to, so. I guess I'm confused as to what is being asked for.
Well, my clients received a letter from, from the building inspector, Miss Sheen.
And this is the October second letter?
This is the October second letter, and among other things, there were some code violations found. Those, those are all being addressed internally, but there wasn't a, a representation that the property doesn't meet the definition of a single-family dwelling, and it was categorized as a boarding house where six or more persons share a living area. And I've done extensive research on this over the past few days, including research through the assessor's office, and my clients did some research through the voting records, and we've determined that, among other things, the assessor's office has been assessing this as a three-family forever, and to date, as a three-family, it's been used as a three-family. We have a letter signed under the pains and penalties of perjury by the daughter of the previous owner, who's lived there since the fifties, saying that it was a three-family. Voting records show that there are people who have three different last names, which would indicate that three families were living there, and, and I have had a situation before this town before with a client in the past in a similar circumstance, where there's a determination that it wasn't a three-family, and later that was found to be not true, and there was a determination provided by the town that it was indeed a three-family. So I am familiar with some of the variables that come into this with the town, and, and understanding that there were code violations found, that's a separate issue, that's been appealed to the board, state board.
If I could interrupt for just a second.
Sure.
So when I read the letter, my interpretation was not so much saying that it wasn't ever a three-family. I think what I took away from it more was that it doesn't meet the code requirements to be, to have three living units in it, because there are things that are necessary that are missing, and so I'm not sure, it sounds to me more like a code enforcement problem. So giving, giving a brief, brief history of the process, just the, the discussion of the assessor's office, unfortunately, I'm aware that this has happened in the past, that the assessors taxes on what they see. It's a somewhat unfortunate situation where the assessors don't dictate zoning, and frankly, I wouldn't want them to try and do zoning, that, that's a separate department. From a building, building permit record standpoint, we do have a historical record of this property being moved across the street, the actual structure itself.
Right.
Which at that time was a two-family. The existing lot is not sufficient to support any other use, such as a multifamily, which would be a three-family, or a boarding house use. So, from a building stand, and zoning standpoint, my understanding was, would be that this is a two-family structure and simply that, so, kind of on that line, I guess if, if we wanted to move forward, I, I think the application of a variance for the dimensional regulations is somewhat appropriate, and, you know, a special permit of a continuance of uses is, I mean, I guess it's, I guess up, up to debate, but from a building record, building record, that there is, it is.
Do we know if this was all permitted for a three-family?
So my understanding is it was a two-family, it was permitted to be used as a two-family.
As a two-family, and that's documented.
And, and it would be able to continue to operate today as a two-family, but as a three-family or other intensive use, such as a boarding house, as was noticed in the notice of violations, they discussed the, the number of bedroom units that were noticed upon. No kitchen. The work being done there. So, from that standpoint, it would appear to be a case of a two-family that was modified in a way that may have allowed a more intensive use, whether that's legal or illegal, and so, under those circumstances, that's where you see the assessors will go in, and they'll simply tax on.
What they see.
What they see. The counterargument to that would, of course, be that the applicant has enjoyed the benefit of the, of the rents for that period of time.
Right.
Again, whether legal or illegal, but it's a matter of, of that. But if, but is it possible for us to grant a variance, to allow it to be a three-family if it met the code requirements, or no? So if it met the code requirements, my understanding is that they would have significant challenges in regards to building code, but from a zoning standpoint, I do believe if, if the board did feel favorable of this application, that the granting of the variance for the dimensional regulations and the special permit for a continuance of existing uses, from a zoning standpoint, I, I would feel that that would be appropriate, but again, my understanding is that the, which is a separate issue, but my understanding is that they would have significant building code issues, and.
Right.
Whether or not they would be before us for additional changes, they may have to do significant alterations to the building to meet those requirements, but if the board felt dementable to granting it, we could proceed that way, but.
I would have no reason to. I mean.
Okay, so.
Any other questions? Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Well, I'm just trying to get a grasp of this claim that there was documentation that this is a two-family, and we have seen a paper or an application from, I think, nineteen sixty-one. I don't know if that's the document you're referring to, but that's a handwritten application by the previous owner, who, as I stated, his daughter has provided us an affidavit saying that it's a three-family, so.
So we don't have that in front of us.
Yes.
You could maybe walk us through what we do have, that might be helpful for understanding. Let me pull up the.
Well, that's what I'm trying to engage too, is I don't know, there's no paperwork
So the.
In front of the board that says it's a two-family, as far as I know.
The permit that I'm referencing is a Town of Shrewsbury Inspection and Construction of Buildings Department, application for permit to build submitted May second, nineteen sixty-one. The under sign hereby applies for a permit to move, moved by. Snyder. Do you have it there?
This is the application.
Is that when the building was moved?
Nineteen sixty-one.
Nineteen sixty-one, correct, and I'm just trying to. Yeah, two families. How many families will it provide for?
One.
When two families, line nine.
And noting the existence of this document, I would just say, this was pre-zoning nineteen sixty-one. It may have said two families when they made the application, but I have voting records that indicate from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen seventy that there were three families living there. So, again, zoning wasn't, wasn't in effect until the late sixties in Shrewsbury, so notwithstanding the fact that it may say two families here, it doesn't preclude this from being a two, a three-family, especially given the ample amount of evidence in the form of the voter records, which I have here, again, we don't want to, whatever the board thinks is the best course of action here, we understand that there may be some code issues that need to be addressed, but my client would like to speak regarding what the use of the property's been and how it's affected his family.
Essentially, we purchased the property in two thousand and one as a three-family from federal agency HUD. It was a foreclosed property. We basically went in there, we cleaned it up, we painted. I moved myself in there, with my wife, my daughter, and my older daughter, and then after we did all the painting of the other two units, my wife's sister and her brother moved in with my nephew who's in the audience. And then my brother-in-law lived upstairs in the third floor unit, or the second unit, and my sister-in-law lived downstairs, and we lived on the, on the side unit. It's been that way for twenty years, or excuse me, eighteen years that we've lived there. It's always been that way. From my understanding, it's been a three-family, at least from the assessor's office, since nineteen seventy-two. Tearing apart a family and telling them that they have to, they can't use the house as they purchased it, after living there for eighteen years, a tight-knit family that basically is there to help each other out. My sister-in-law, my brother-in-law, they don't make a lot of money, they don't get any benefits from the state, they can't afford to live in unsubsidized housing, so we try to help them out. We bought this house for them, we bought it for us, to raise our kids in a good school system in a good town, and essentially, it's tearing us apart.
To me, it sounds like when you purchased this property, that the attorneys representing the people didn't do their due diligence to find out actually what this property was listed as a two-family or a three-family.
From my understanding is that when we purchased the property, everybody has informed us to check the town records, and they've always geared us towards the assessor's office. That's where all the town records are documented and kept. From my understanding, checking with the building inspector, from what people have told me, is only something that's been within the last few years, in the last three or four years. It's not, not something that was considered even ten, fifteen years ago, or even longer than that. My point with that is, when I purchased the property, I wasn't building anything, I was buying something, and there's no need to get a buyer's permit. You go buy, you buy the property, you check the wreckage, you listen to the professionals, the real estate agents, they're professionals, the lawyers, they're professionals, the title agencies, they're professionals.
And they couldn't come up with any.
The Federal Housing Commission, they're professionals. I'm just a, you know, a thirty-year-old man trying to buy a house.
So when it was purchased, was it, is there documentation explicitly showing from the purchase that it was purchased as a three-family?
It's advertised in the telegram because there is a large three-family in Shrewsbury, Massachusetts.
HUD indicates in the disclosures, there's three units.
So these are, these are some of the things that probably could be submitted to the board to further that argument. I haven't seen these, these documents, so.
Can we continue this, just to, so we can examine all the documentation?
Yeah. Yeah, so if.
Because we don't have that information.
Yeah, so if the, if the applicant's dementable, we can continue the hearing. I can give you my card, we can meet, review additional documentation. I do think it's going to come to a point where, again, real estate agents and the assessors do not dictate zoning, so I think it's going to become, it's still going to come down to a point where the, the board is going to have to decide if they have sufficient evidence to make the determination of a historical three-family use, but. Can I just ask a question about that, Chris? If it was in use as a three-family prior to the time that zoning was instituted in nineteen sixty-seven, what's the effect of that? Is it allowed to continue as a three-family, or? Yeah, so, so the, the bylaw does not apply to, so there is, I shouldn't say it doesn't apply, there is certain grandfathering restrictions that allow continuation of. Prior use. Prior nonconforming uses, and they're certainly more stringent for pre-zoning cases. Okay, I was just curious, okay.
If I could just address some of those concerns with the code violations, the fire alarm situation, when we purchased that house, we had the fire department come in. A lot of my fire alarms are hardwired, and they told me that was fine. When I purchased the house, I put more fire alarms, the battery-operated kind. They have been taken down, my tenants took them down, they don't like them beeping or whatever. When Sheen had pointed that out, and I was up there with the electrician, I went out and bought five hundred dollars' worth of fire alarms, according to the code, and put them all up there. I asked the fire department to come down and give me an inspection so I can at least get that out of the way. I was told they can't do it until there's a determination of what type of property is, which is understandable. You know, they need to know if it's a two-family, a three-family, a board, what is it? You know, I get that, okay? But I did my, what I could, at least satisfy that factor. As far as the stove is concerned, my, my brother-in-law, he's a bachelor, he had no need for a stove, he has like a little burner he puts on his shelf, he used that, okay? There's stuff up there for him to eat, there's a refrigerator up there for him, I mean, if you could, if you will, maybe college-style, dorm-style stuff, it was just him.
You know what I think the best thing to do is? Let us review the other documentation that you could submit to the planning department, and we'll be able to review it, and we could continue until next month and move forward from there.
Can I just add a comment?
Go ahead.
So, as you review some of these properties that are coming before you, the idea is not to penalize the current owners, the idea is a hundred percent life safety. So, we have to address certain dates in our zoning bylaw. Prior to nineteen sixty-seven, existing uses, yes, they're grandfathered for uses, but we have not been able to document this property in existence as a three-family prior to nineteen sixty-seven. We had to dig pretty hard to find a permit application for a two-family for nineteen sixty-one, saying that the property was moved, and the only reason why we knew to look there was from a few hints that the owner gave us to say that the house was moved. So we were able to figure, to figure that out. But life safety is what we're all about here, so we have to know, the dates are very important so that we know the appropriate use, and then from that, we know what life safety codes to apply. That's why the fire department can't go in right now, is because the use is where we start. So we really just have to be very cautious about that.
Thanks, Pam. All right, so like I says, submit any other documentation that you have, we could review it, planning could review it, and we'll just continue this in the next hearing.
I'm told that an audience member wanted to speak.
Soon as you were done, I was going to address her.
I've been sitting here very impatiently. My name is Julian Maloney, I'm a Colangelo. My father, Julio, bought the property in late fifties. Before he bought the property, it was owned by Mrs. Richardson, who we bought it from. Mrs. Richardson lived in the first floor of the apartment, and the other two apartments were occupied by Uncle Charlie and the Robinson family. So we wanted to clear you up that, that permit may have been on my father, because my father was never detailed. He always referred it as two houses, and he may have said, when they filled out the permit, never rereading it, which I know he never did, he should have checked it, and I think this is all his fault, but I can't blame him, because he's been dead for twenty years.
I understand that, but we're going by what the written document.
Excuse me, but it was before zoning, it was before the zoning laws. Because I can remember my father saying, they came with a brush, they mean nonconforming when we were a business, and then they just brushed it through as far as multiple families on Main Street. Now, beside us, the house, this, I think it's Whiting's house, he had five apartments in his. I don't know if you're ever going back to check this, right up and down Main Street. It was loaded with people who converted. up and down Main Street, it was loaded with people who converted their houses into two or three-family homes. And I know a fact because I'm a living proof of it. It's been going on, I can attest to it, I'm seventy-six years old, for over sixty years, it's been used as a three-family house.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I'd still like to have the documentation to be reviewed, and you could still discuss with planning, and I'd like to still continue until December thirtieth.
Sure. And just a point of clarification, um, you know, I came in here thinking this, well, it's a special permit variance application, which I did just see, uh, my client had. Um, is there any way that we can amend this to, uh, a determination of pre-existing non-conforming use status under forty-eight, section seven?
No. So the reason why is because forty-eight, section seven refers to, um, structures only, not uses. So you can apply it to a use.
So, so again, I think, um, I think it might be beneficial that we can, uh, meet, go over the documentation that, um, was had on both sides, uh, and then we can submit that to, um, additional departments as well to, to get more clarification even from, from fire and police as well for.
We could also use that woman's testimony in the, in the audience.
Correct. So I think, I think from that, we might be able, be able to have more information to, to make a more comprehensive decision on this specific property.
Well, like Patty said, safety is our main concern.
Correct.
I can just, um, safety is my main concern. My whole family's living there, and I would never jeopardize their life or their, or their safety.
I understand that, yeah.
Okay. I, I maintain that property as best I can. There's nothing that is structurally unsound about that property. Okay? And if you go in there, you're not going to see anything that's, uh, detrimentally unsafe. Okay? I wouldn't be having my family move in. I wouldn't be living there if it was unsafe.
So I think, um, so life safety is primarily a building code and fire code issue. Um, I think, again, to reiterate, I think the benefit of continuing this and looking at the documentation more comprehensively with the other departments, um, if my understanding was correct from Ms. Sheehan's, uh, discussion, is that, um, when applying the, um, various codes for life safety to this property, the dates that we're going to use, that we're going to agree upon, um, from the town side in regards to this property are going to be important for what levels, uh, of life safety that's brought up to. Obviously, modern standards, the current standards are going to be, um, far more stringent and far more expensive, frankly. Um, so I think, um, again, having a more comprehensive review, um, of the documentation that's submitted, we may be able to get a better and more amenable situations for.
Fair enough. And, and if I could just make a note, the house was built in the late eighteen hundreds, okay? It's not built in the sixties, it wasn't built in the fifties. You're looking at a, a house that's probably over two hundred years old. Okay? And I'm not sure if this is the right form that I was supposed to fill out. Is this the form that I was handed to fill out?
Seems to me that it wasn't applying for a variance and special permit. If this is the document, it says other grandfather non-conforming use status. I don't know if this is the document that you got.
That's the one I sent in.
There's nothing about application for variance or special permit on here. It says other, it's checked out.
It's form of appeal, and this is other.
So you're saying you're not applying for a variance or a special permit?
I don't know, I just want to be able to.
So if the noticing, so if the noticing was done incorrectly, we can, uh, request a withdrawal without prejudice from this, and then you can reapply, uh, under the section that you feel is appropriate, and we can notice it correctly and go for a new hearing under that.
But if you read the legal notice, it says continuation of.
Of a non.
Of a non, yes, of this.
So again, we, we noticed it as it was submitted to us and, um, tried to apply the correct, um, sections as it was submitted to us in a way that was both beneficial to the applicant and could move forward with, with, uh, the information that was provided to us. So.
The thing I'm worried about is losing the grandfather status of an old house. Yeah, I see, I, this is the first time I ever had to deal with something like this.
So again, so I think, um, there's the two options. If you feel that the, there's a separate sections that need to be applied for, we can review that, and we can, under that, we would be able to draw without prejudice, and we can reapply for a new hearing. Um, or, um, if you want to continue under the existing hearing, um, we can review the documentation. I'm happy to do both.
Again, I, I think if, if this was an error on the town, I think you could still post, uh, a subsequent hearing.
I think if it's been noticed in a certain way, we're stuck with how it's been noticed. So I would say the two choices are stick with it the way it is as it's been noticed, or withdraw without prejudice and reapply, and have a chance to sit down and get more documentation in, get more information in, and try to find a way through. That's, that's the way I'm looking at it.
I think that's the best way of doing it.
Now, when you say reapply, does that mean basically fill out a new piece of paper and do this whole thing all over again? Or fill out a new piece of paper and just continue with the November, uh, December thirtieth review?
So if you feel that the application is an error and that a new hearing, uh, is required, that separate sections need to be requested relief from, uh, it would require a new form of appeal filed with the clerk. It would open a new hearing, new noticing, a new fee. The board has the option to waive that fee at their discretion. Um, they're under no obligation to do so. Um, so again, the, these are conversations we can have if you'd like to continue with the current hearing, or if you'd like to move forward with that. Um, in order to preserve the rights of everyone, I think the, the best option would be to continue this, to have that discussion, um.
That's the rule, thinking they, they should.
And move forward from there.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm just worried, I mean, if, this was noticed as a variance, special permit application, and we're applying for one, we're essentially waiving our pre-existing non-conforming use status, and then that.
So again, so, so, so if you would rather reference a separate section or apply separately, um, that would be.
This was, this was the application. It just, it was a town clerical error.
So it was not a clerical error, it was an interpretation of continuing the three-family use. So the legal notice specifically said, so I basically wrote the legal notice and put it as broad as possible, special permit, variance, and continuation of a three-family. So basically, you have option of all of them.
So, okay, so you're saying that any of the three, and we're, we're not, we're not going forward with a variance or special permit, as long as the board understands that. Because that's clearly not what the intention of the application was, as it was checked off as other. And that would essentially get rid of our grandfather protection. So as long as the board is on, and we're all under the understanding that we're looking to continue the use, the non-conforming use, then we have no problem with going.
So you still need to cite a section that you're continuing the use under specifically?
Section four was cited. Section four, continuance of use, is what he cited.
Correct, and there is currently in the application, section four B, uh, which is the continuance of existing uses under the current application we are hearing tonight.
Okay, so if, section four.
So we can continue under the existing, but if you feel that the legal notice was an error, we would need to renotice, uh, which requires an entirely new hearing.
Well, I, I don't think that's.
So again, I think the best option is to continue this hearing to discuss, uh, what the best options are in regards to the legal notice, uh, your rights and protections, uh, in regards to that, and, uh, the process of frankly, zoning board of appeals to, to get through this.
By, by continuing, you're not waiving anything, I think is the point.
I understand. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we're all, we all understand what's going on.
No, sure, right.
Yep. Okay, well, we'll.
So you want to continue until December thirtieth?
Move to continue to December thirtieth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we still have.
Forty-four Ralph and eighty-six.
Okay, our next hearing is forty-four Ralph Fab, Residence B two, Sean Noonan, CMSR Services LLC, three eight two Southford Street, Suite two sixty-eight of the Mass, special permit, section four dash B to allow construction of an addition on an existing non-conforming sing, single-family dwelling.
Good, good evening. Uh, Sean Noonan, again, CMSR Services, representing Dan Kapler. We're looking to add a sunroom addition with an open deck on the rear of the property. During the online application process, uh, everything went through, and then it was kicked back because the house, and Ralph Fab is, uh, I guess a lot of the houses on that street are existing non-conforming for the front setback. But the, the addition, sunroom addition clearly meets all the setbacks for that type of zoning, thirty feet on the side and over eighty-six feet on the rear. Did you guys get the new?
Yes.
Cause I, I did, no, I've got a.
Okay.
I actually sent a new one out because we act. My surveyor, I had a surveyor pass away during the middle of the whole thing. So we, we do have a certified plot plan showing all the setbacks. Again, side, so the, the actual sunroom and deck meet all the requirements. So we're looking for a special permit, just because the front is, is only fifteen point seven feet and a thirty, I believe that is. So that's, that's all we're looking at, is hoping that we can move forward with the project.
So what was the setback on the front before this plant, this?
No, it's.
Same, same.
Yeah, the additions on.
Nothing's changing on, on the, on the, on the envelope. It's, we're adding to the back, but because it's existing non-conforming.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the, the project is, is well within any of the setbacks.
So you're not doing anything to make it more non-conforming? The non-conformity exists as is.
It's unchanged.
Correct.
No questions?
Anyone in the audience want to be heard on this? Seeing none, we'll take it under advisement, notify you of the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next hearing is eighty-six Raffin Street, Residence B one, Lucinda Adams, special permit, section six, table one, to allow an in-law apartment.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Richard Ricker, and, um, I'm here representing Lucinda Adams, who's the applicant. Um, I did, um, I did submit, uh, to the planning department a letter, um, relative to, um, questions that were raised, I believe through the building department last week, and, and, um, were addressed in, um, Mr. Goldrick's, uh, November twenty-one, uh, letter. Um, since I, uh, since I did that, I also have a letter that I'd like to submit from the neighbors who happen to be eighty-nine and ninety-one years old. Um, they've lived at this property next door since.
Sixty-two.
Nineteen sixty-two. Um, could I, could I just?
Thank you.
This is the original.
As Ron Tukapu says, we need to keep them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So very similar to the, um, last year you had, the, the question arises as to the, um, non-conformity or the, the status of the property as a two-family in its present, uh, state. Um, I spent some time last week, um, looking through the building, I mean, through the town clerk's census records, and, um, based on that, um, I determined that since before nineteen sixty-six, in my opinion at least, um, it, it appears that, um, not just two different families lived there at times, but sometimes three. Um, I would suggest to you, however, that the, uh, overwhelming evidence that I saw, uh, determines that it was at least a two-family back in nineteen sixty-six, sixty-seven timeframe. The, um, this letter that, uh, from the Perrys, who I, as I stated, are eighty-nine and ninety-one years old, uh, and have been there since nineteen sixty-two, um, I think, um, does a good job to buttress the, the fact that, that to their memory, uh, which still happens to be pretty good at their age, um, I would suggest, um, this was, uh, made into a two-family by, uh, Norris's son sometime prior to nineteen sixty-six. Um, with that in mind, um, my client, um, has a, a situation in her house where, um, her brother lives there as well. She'd like to have that area of the house set aside as an in-law apartment for him, um, and that's what this is all about. Um, she's asking for the special permit, um, to set that area aside, as it pretty much presently is. There's a couple of minor modifications interior that have to be made for.
And what are those?
Fire and safety.
And what are those, babe?
Um, there's a, um, a, a wall that has to be opened to, to allow egress, um, from, a second egress from, from his location. Um, and I think that's just about it. I think she, this all came about, I think, is she, she was going for a building permit to put in, uh, outside staircase.
I take it those are within the setbacks, the outside stairs, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, um, so the exterior staircase that she wanted to do anyway, needs to be, needs to go up and, um, an interior, um, redesign in order to give the second egress to, uh, what would be the in-law apartment. Um, and that second egress would, would actually run, it would intersect with her unit. It would go through that and out, and out.
And that setup with a kitchen, bath?
Yes. Yeah. It, it actually already is. He's been living there and, and the, the kind of, and living there. Uh, this is a request to make it basically legal as an in-law apartment.
He's disabled.
So is that what the special permit's for, as far as, uh?
In-law apartment, yes. And she knows the restrictions, she knows that when she sells, it goes. She knows that if he moves out, the in-law moves out, that it goes, so.
Any board members have any question?
Not for me.
I don't, no.
Any comments from?
Just as a clarification, so is this to, as a two-family with an in-law unit or a single-family with?
It's a two-family with an in-law unit.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to be, uh, speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll take it under advisement and notify you of our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight sixteen Boston Turnpike was continued.
Yes.
Yep.
Eight sixty-four Boston Turnpike is continued again.
Correct.
Twenty-five Wesleyan Street, any discussion?
I have no issue with it. There's no change to footprint, so I would, uh, if there's no discussion, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, did we, uh, the, the regular conditions for the twenty-five Wesleyan?
What was that?
The, so the, the single-family to two-family, the, or, sorry, nevermind. Taking in a llama, I had a mistake.
You had me puzzled there for sex.
I just, I noted, uh, we didn't have a, um, motion to continue the eight sixty-four Hartford Turnpike.
Can we do that right after?
So forget to have a motion.
Motion to continue.
Do I have a second, round eighty-six?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is this Willett?
Yeah, Willett. Was Willett, uh?
Uh, so Willett was continued.
Continued. And we made a motion on that already? Two forty-six Boston Turnpike?
Continued. This is also continued.
Did we motion that also?
I think so. This is the most continuances.
Yeah.
We've had since I've been on the line.
Uh, twenty-five Crescent Street, discussion?
I have nothing to discuss, I would.
No issue.
I guess, uh, my only thought is if it, we, they have the variance for being detached, and they have the special permit for being, um, an in-law, it would be, if they're not using any of the original structure anymore at all, it'd be nice if it, uh, if we could get it further into the required setbacks, if it wouldn't take very much moving it.
25 Wesleyan Street has been approved unanimously. Any discussion on 44 Ralph Ave?
No, I don't think so for me.
Nope.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
25 Crescent Street has been approved unanimously. 59 Julio Drive has been continued already, right?
Correct.
Any discussion on 86 Grafton Street, in-law apartment?
None for me.
They seem to understand what they need to understand.
Can I also add a, add that, a comment be put into the decision?
Absolutely.
So, that the board has received sufficient information stating that this is an existing nonconforming two-family dwelling prior to 1967 and that you received substantial information to support that?
Yes, I was just gonna say, or something to that effect.
That would be helpful because as you can see, that's gonna be important information in others coming forward.
Absolutely, yeah. As stated by the building inspector.
So, motion to approve with conditions as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
44 Ralph Ave has been approved unanimously. 59 Julio Drive has been continued already, right?
Correct.
Any discussion on 86 Grafton Street, in-law apartment?
None for me.
They seem to understand what they need to understand.
Can I also add a, add that, a comment be put into the decision?
Absolutely.
So, that the board has received sufficient information stating that this is an existing nonconforming two-family dwelling prior to 1967 and that you received substantial information to support that?
Yes, I was just gonna say, or something to that effect.
That would be helpful because as you can see, that's gonna be important information in others coming forward.
Absolutely, yeah. As stated by the building inspector.
So, motion to approve with conditions as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
44 Ralph Ave has been approved unanimously.
That would be, yep. Julio Drive, but we already, we don't have to do anything on that.
We don't have to.
Julio Drive?
Five to not.
We already did.
Yeah, we already did that, it's in cross section.
Do we have any new business or anything?
No, so I have no new business to correspond on, I'm adjourned for tonight.
I feel like more than one signature was required on something, but not the case. Somebody double-check.
I think they were all single, the ones that got through.
All, all the others that needed, that got continued would have required one, I guess.
Some of them, yeah.
212 Julio Drive needed two vault sheets.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
86 Grafton Street has been approved unanimously.
Move to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.